Hi, Brian.
Hey, Sarah, how are you?
Doing okay. Trying to figure out who's on. John Banera, is he on?
Hello, Sarah.
Jim, how you doing? Looking for another board member.
Hey, Catherine, how are you? You're muted.
No, I'm not. How are you?
Who am I?
How are you?
Oh, I'm very well, thank you, after driving 2,800 miles over Thanksgiving.
Wow, that's pretty far.
Yes, it is. But it was marvelous.
Well, I hope you enjoyed it.
I did. I got to see my kids, who I haven't seen for two years.
Yeah.
And the grandchildren, and new houses that my son and daughter built, so it was really terrific.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So I see that Sean has joined us and James Mitchell has joined us.
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi.
John Banera, is he on? Well. We have a quorum, so I will call the meeting to order. So I call to order the continued public hearing of the 40B application of Jeffrey Engler of SLV School Street LLC to be known as a sanctuary at Manchester by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, to construct 136-unit apartment complex for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street Assessors Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27. The first item on the agenda is to read, enter some correspondence received into the record. What we are going to be doing is on the Town 40B webpage, we'll be creating a section titled "Public Record Communications", and when we receive letters from the public, we will be posting to that website, so people will have access to it. I have three, three letters to enter in. The first one is from Karen M. Hurley Gurchd, dated November 7, 2021. She is a direct woodlot abutter. And she writes, "As an owner of a share of my grandmother's woodlot, Helen E. Hurley Trust, one and a quarter acres, belonging to our family for over 100 years, that abuts the proposed Shingle Hill development area, I am very concerned. The wastewater treatment plant proposed for the SLV project will be too close to the boundary of our land. The leaching field will run downhill directly onto our land. Lots of blasting will be needed at the SLV site. For certain, the SLV project will destroy the natural environment that exists here. For these reasons, I strongly oppose the SLV project." As you know, the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust has spent more than 50 years working to preserve open space, to protect our water quality, as well as the environment for plants and animals living in the unspoiled areas off Upper School Street. Thanks to MECT's efforts and vision, many people, not just those living in Manchester and Essex, have greatly benefited from the beauty and peace this natural area provides. I have learned that 19 variances from the Conservation Commission alone are required to move ahead with this monstrosity. How can the Zoning Board of Appeals approve the blowing up of Shingle Hill in these critically important wetland and woodland areas, just so one developer can construct his pipe dream of an inappropriate located 40B development? The proposed project on Upper School Street on Shingle Hill will make a huge visual impact on every passerby forever. There will never be trees high enough or fences tall enough to hide this housing project. The land is steep and rocky. It will need to be blown up. The abutting landscape will be adversely impacted in many ways. The pristine Hurley Woodlot and other parcels abutting the proposed development land, as well as protected open space, will be spoiled forever. I've been keeping abreast of the affordable housing projects the town of Manchester is planning to provide by expanding its existing sites, developing new areas that will be far more suitable within the existing community, where residents will be nearer to shops, trains, parks and beach, and necessary services. In other words, where residents will be part of the existing community rather than on the other side of Route 128. I am convinced the people of Manchester will find more appropriate locations in town. For Jeff Engler, the head of SLV, this housing project is just another money-making endeavor, and then he'll move on to the next development. For the townspeople and all of those who travel along this road, the natural beauty will be destroyed forever. The land cannot speak for itself. It needs caring people to do that. The Zoning Board of Appeals should not feel forced to accept this large, inappropriate housing development, because Manchester by the Sea needs to provide more affordable housing units. As an, as an abutter, I am asking the Zoning Board of Appeals to please give this project utmost consideration while the people of Manchester continue to work towards new affordable housing units. The SLV 40B project proposed for Shingle Hill is not the answer." And Karen Gersh lives at 11 Haskell Court in Essex, Mass. The next letter is from Anthony Symboli, the owner of the Manchester Athletic Club, which is an abutter across the street. "After considering the impact of the 40B as one of the town's largest abutters to the project, I do have several concerns. First and foremost is traffic. While this project on its own may not warrant all the measures below, its impact should be considered in the context of the Manchester Athletic Club, its land and its future. The MAC is the last major piece of developable commercial land in Manchester. It has the potential to serve many needs of the town. Its future prospects need to be protected. For instance, if a separate lane or widening of Southern Ave is needed to accommodate traffic, land for that needs to be allocated from the 40B project, not others. Likewise, if restricted turning so as not to cross the lane of traffic, or if traffic lights are needed, these costs or operational burdens should not be and cannot be borne solely by the MAC. It would severely impact its business and any future development. Secondly, the 40B originally proposed handling its own wastewater treatment on-site. I believe if any other solution is proposed or contemplated, then it should consider and accommodate all of the abutters, their present and their potential needs. What makes the 43, 40B project important to the town is that there are currently, if you include the 40B project, only two undeveloped parcels in the LCD in Manchester. While this project does have the potential to help a limited number of residents that need financial relief, approximately 30 to 35, it could affect and limit the last piece of developable commercial land. The full development of my parcel has the potential to help the entire town through provided services or by significantly raising the tax base without putting significant burdens on the town. The last concern is about ancillary uses that may be allowed as part of the 40B project. I feel that since they have had a specific use, namely residential, and they are benefiting from state mandate, that no other uses, public or private, should be allowed on that site. Thank you for your consideration." And the last one is from Daniel Hill. Daniel C. Hill of Hill Law has submitted a letter on behalf of the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust. And he states, and I probably will not read the entire thing because it's lengthy and there's two reports attached to it. "The firm represents the Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, a nonprofit land conservancy with nearly 600 members, and a mission to conserve ecologically important land and wildlife in Manchester and Essex, Massachusetts. MECT is also a neighbor of the vacant parcel of land identified as Manchester Assessors Map 43 Lot 18, which is the subject of the above- referenced comprehensive permit application. I am writing to provide the board with our initial comments, concerns, and recommendations for the board's public hearing. Introduction: By way of background, I have been practicing land use and zoning law for over 20 years, and have represented public and private clients in over 100 Chapter 40B projects over the time, including defending decisions at the Housing Appeals Committee and in Massachusetts courts. I currently serve as a special municipal council to several municipalities on Chapter 40B matters. Probably the most significant function of Chapter 40B is to empower the local zoning board to waive any local bylaw, regulation, policy, or procedure that would render the construction of the project uneconomic. General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20. Thus, the most important task of the board's public hearing is to evaluate the developer's waiver requests and to determine whether the public health, safety, environmental, or planning concerns presented by these waivers outweigh the regional need for housing, in which case they should be denied. There is a prevailing myth that local bylaws and regulations do not apply to Chapter 40B projects. This is wrong. Local rules apply to Chapter 40B projects unless the developer can prove that waivers are needed to make the project economically viable, and that the need for affordable housing outweighs the local concerns protected by the local bylaws and regulations for which waivers are sought. This balance and test was illustrated in the case of Reynolds versus Stowe Zoning Board of Appeals, where the court ruled that it was unreasonable for the zoning board to grant waivers from a local water resource protection bylaw in light of demonstrated impacts on the 37-unit project septic system on nearby private drinking water wells. To put this standard in plain English, the board need only grant waivers to the extent they are necessary to make the project economically viable, and then only if the waivers do not present insurmountable public health, safety, environmental, or planning impacts that outweigh the need for housing." General comments: As the applicant is aware, the projected site is environmentally sensitive, surrounded on three sides by bordering vegetated wetlands, vernal pools, tributaries to a perennial stream, Sawmill Brook. Sawmill Brook is a designated cold-water fishery and one of the only streams left in the region to support native brook trout. The site is within the Zone 3 wellhead protection for the town's Lincoln Street Public Water Supply Well and is within the town's Water Protection, Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Stormwater runoff from the project's internal roadway and parking areas, and approximately 25,000 gallons per day of wastewater will be recharged into the ground and ultimately discharged into Sawmill Brook, which is hydrologically connected to the Lincoln Street Well Aquifer. Manchester has never seen a project this large and impactful to its natural environment and public water supply. At 136 units, the project would represent a 6% increase in the town's housing inventory. Project of this magnitude must be thoroughly vetted. All environmental impacts must be identified, quantified, and addressed. Compliance with state environmental laws must be confirmed, and local environmental laws must be preserved if there is any material degradation. Unfortunately, the applicant has gotten off on the wrong foot. In order for the board to evaluate the viability and suitability of the project's onsite recharge system, it must have soil and groundwater evaluation data and the location of those proposed systems, typically collected in test pits. Test pit locations were shown on prior iterations of the applicant's site plans filed with the subsidizing agency, Mass. Housing, but are inexplicably removed from the plans filed with the board earlier this month. Nor have any test pit data logs been provided to the board, a material omission from a development permit application where subservice recharge of stormwater and wastewater is proposed. The applicant appears to have adopted an adversarial posture even before the board's hearing has opened. In email exchanges with Mass. Housing, its manager Jeff Engler characterized local concerns with environmental damage as fabrication in the ruins. He also called Manchester a very difficult town. In the same email chain, he promised to meet all statutory and programmatic regulations and obligations during the public hearing process, but he filed a comprehensive permit application lacking in critical detail, containing no test pit data and no details on descriptions of its wastewater treatment facility. It is not too late for Mr. Engler to hit the reset button and adjust his approach to permitting of the project. To do so, Mr. Engler and his team of paid consultants should be prepared to be candid, forthcoming, and transparent with every design detail. MECT promises to do the same with its technical review and comments. We are pleased to provide the board with initial comment letters from Scott Horsey, a hydrologist with decades of experience working with federal and state environmental agency impacts from recharge systems, and John Chesia, a civil engineer with the same level of experience designing and peer reviewing complex multifamily residential projects, including wastewater treatment facilities. Mr. Horsey and Chesia identify specific design details that are incomplete or completely missing from the application materials filed today. They also flag a number of apparent nonconformities with state regulations and guidelines governing wastewater treatment and stormwater management facilities. Mr. Horsey's comments raise a number of concerns with potential water quality impacts and the need to properly characterize those through a robust hydro-geological analysis. We look forward to discussing these issues with the board during the public hearing and urge the board to retain qualified, independent peer reviewers on civil design, hydrology, wetland science, and transportation engineering. And attached to this letter are the reports from Mr. Horsey and Mr. Chesia, and those will go up on the website with the letter. If anybody is interested in looking at them. The next item, which is the primary item in our agenda tonight, is to discuss and select a traffic circulation and parking peer reviewer. We've sent requests for proposals out. We have received three responses by the deadline that we gave. So we're going to be looking at those tonight, and hopefully we'll be able to rank them based on priority, and then we'll be able to go out to them and see if they'll be able to deliver the peer review by January 6th to meet our schedule. So the three firms that responded are StanTech, BSC Group, and Environmental Partners. And I believe the board members received a copy of the RFP plus those proposals. And does any member of the board have any initial thoughts on this? Please raise your hand so I can recognize you. Brian?
I'm just looking at the three. My only thought is, of the three that we have, we have an opportunity to have a third set of eyes look at the traffic study, the applicants. I believe StanTech, we were told, did peer review for the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
And my feelings are that I'd like to see someone other than StanTech. I'd like to see a third independent look at this, which boils it down to Environmental Partners and BSC. That's just my thought. I think this is an opportunity to really get a good global look at it. And so, and I mean, we can talk about, I don't think dollars are an issue at this point, but I think that, that's the, that's the two I've boiled it down to. Just my feelings as far as StanTech goes. And it's nothing against StanTech, the fact that let's take another look at it from a different perspective.
Catherine, what's your take on that?
I agree completely. I was going to say the same thing, so I agree with what Brian said.
And do you have a preference over BSC or Environmental Partners?
Well, I mean, I'd like to hear a little bit what everyone else has to say, but my initial impression, I was, I was really impressed with the breadth of experience in the Environmental Partners and with the number of communities that they'd worked in that seemed very similar to ours. So I would say that, you know, if you're asking to take sort of my initial, my initial response would be that I probably have a preference for Environmental Partners, but I'm open to hearing what others have to say and revising my opinion.
James Mitchell?
I agree with what both Catherine and Brian have said. I do think it would be worthwhile to have a new opinion or a new set of eyes, which basically precludes our choosing StanTech at this time. I also happen to agree with what Catherine has said about the experience of Environmental Partners. I don't really have anything to add to that. I think we're in good hands regardless of who we choose.
Okay. Jim DeJordt. You're muted.
I'm sorry, my microphone was turned off.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to pass to Sean for a moment. I'm still trying to evaluate these reports. And I would ask, have we received any comment from the town planner regarding them?
No. They were passed along to us. Okay, let me go to Sean.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just kind of going along with Brian and Catherine on this one. From what I can, you know, reading and everything, it's just kind of going along with Environmental Partners needing that second set of eyes. Also.
John Banera, is he on? He might have an opinion, but apparently not if he's not here. Sue Brown, are you on?
I'm on, Sarah.
Do you have an opinion?
I don't. I think they all provide generally the basic same level of service. There's a, no, there is quite a span in the amount, and I don't know if that is being considered. I suspect that some board members would like a third, a third set of eyes. I think that's a reasonable request, but I think that, I think all show that they kind of provide the same, the same level of review and have, you know, all have worked in this capacity before. So I really don't have a preference on whom to select.
Ezra Glenn, are you on the phone?
Sarah, he is not. He had a conflict. He didn't think that he was needed, but he said, "I could text, I could text him if needed." And he would try to jump on. He has another commitment.
Okay. So do I have a motion? Well, so, Brian, did you have any additional thoughts?
No, I mean, other than the fact that, as Sue pointed out, there appears to be a disparity as far as the costs go, but that's not our concern, if that, you know. And I'm trying to do a side-by-side analysis. It looks like they're both providing the same level of review and services. You know, if it was my money, but it's not. Based on my, what I see, I would think that, and both obviously have experienced a peer review. You know, I don't see the value of doubling up with Environmental Partners if BSC can do it with the same quality work for half the, half the dollars, you know. And what I, what I look at is StanTech, so, and, you know, sometimes you take the high and the low and you throw them out. I'm looking at both StanTech and BSC, we're in the same ballpark dollar-wise. And then we've got the third coming in at twice the price, and I don't see if they, are they doing twice, twice the work? I don't know. But, so, my opinion is that, and again, this becomes SLV's, I think, although it's their money.
It's our, it's our decision.
Yeah, but we get to spend it.
Madam Chairwoman, if I may, for the record,
Mr. Engler?
Strategic Jeff Engler from SLV School Street. I don't, as the applicant, I don't have the right to select a peer reviewer, but I certainly have the right to review the scope and the fee. And, and your consultants Ezra and Sue would vouch for that, and I haven't seen anything. And if the board is, listen, I, I'm not going to argue if people want a third opinion, but if the board is intent on getting, you know, review done by the sixth, it makes all the sense in the world to hire StanTech. They're familiar with the site. They've done it. I would have concern that the other two are going to be ready by the sixth, with the holidays and the light coming up. But with that said, if the scopes are the same, we're going to have a hard, and I know both firms, I would have no issue working with BSC. I'd have no issue working with Environmental Partners, but it would be hard pressed for me to pay double when the scopes are the same. I mean, that's just, you know, as people on the board, I appreciate Brian's comments. It just, you know, it doesn't make sense, particularly when we're going to be doing lots of peer review, presumably. You know, this is just one peer review. You know, so I'm not going to fight for StanTech. All three are good firms by anybody's judgment or measure. I think StanTech makes the most sense, but I understand board members wanting kind of a fresh look. But, you know, BSC is a very good firm, and I haven't seen the proposals, but if their scope is the same as Environmental Partners, yet Environmental Partners is charging double, that, that seems, you know, seems kind of inconsistent with me, particularly as Brian said, when two of the three are within the same radum and the third is an outlier. That's just my opinion.
Sarah, I will note that the town council is on, if you had any questions for town council. Mr. Pucci is on, if you would, if you have any questions.
Mr. Pucci, do you have any comments?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Pucci from Town Council's office. I just have a limited comment on it, as you had pointed out, Madam Chair. I just have a limited comment on it, as, as you had pointed out, Madam Chair, it's entirely the board's decision on the peer review selection. Uh, the comprehensive permit regulations do encourage. Uh, the board to try to work cooperatively with the applicant, um, in terms of selecting someone. So if there is a, uh, you know, an objection to a scope or the cost. You are encouraged to try to work that out with the, uh, applicant. I haven't, um. You know, compared these, uh, proposals, uh, side by side. Uh, they are both, you know, have great reputations, the firms, but. You know, this, these issues sometimes break down a little bit differently. Sometimes. You know, an initial scope. Uh, and an estimate ends up, um. Not being enough and has to be replenished and, uh, and I'm not saying that, that. Um, anyone, you know, sort of. Lowballed, um, the estimate. I'm not saying that at all, but I have seen it come up that, you know, an initial estimate. Ends up, um, increasing during the, the review and question. So, you know, again, it's, it's up to you and the board. To review those proposals. See which one is most realistic, see which one, um, you're most interested in engaging. If you also find that, um. Certain of the experience set forth in one of the proposals. Uh, is, you know, um. You think that that's impressive and, and, and that's why you want to select that peer reviewer, that would be something relevant as well. So, um, that would pretty much be my comment. I, I wouldn't comment substantively on, uh. You know, intrude on, on the board member's ability to review these proposals. And decide which one they think is most appropriate.
Thank you. Um, and, and just to make it clear, the difference in the. Costs, the proposals, the estimated. They're all on time, you know. Hourly rates. Um, BSC estimated nine thousand six hundred and Environmental Part. Partners estimated sixteen thousand eight hundred. Not a significant difference in my book.
I, I'm going to have to go, go ahead and agree with you, Sarah.
Significant difference. I paid twelve thousand to have the entire study done. So Environmental Partners is charging more to review a study than to actually conduct all the work and write the report. That seems grossly inconsistent to me, grossly inconsistent.
I, I would recommend kind of. That type of going back and forth. I mean, my initial impression of that, as you said, Madam Chair, that doesn't seem. Overly, um, you know. It's not like it's fifty thousand compared to nine thousand. Uh, it's fairly close. And again, it's really your, um, discretion to make that selection.
This is, um, this is Catherine Howe, um, if I may, just. Um, I was, I was noticing, um. I, I would just like to rebut a little. Well, that the scope of services here is exactly the same, because it does seem to me that Environmental Partners is offering a more robust review. More, more sort of included interactions, more in-person meetings, more written memorandum. So from my initial review, I would, um. You know, I haven't done an exact side by side here, but just from glancing through both of them, I do think Environmental Partners is, is offering. A more robust work, which, which may support their higher price.
Thank you. Um, any other thoughts? Jim Dietrich, do you have any other thoughts?
No, I. Let me make sure my microphone is turned on.
It is.
It is. I don't think the, the difference in cost is significant. Um, I do feel that. Someone, a firm that has already gone through this once before. Has some experience with it, and that should be taken into consideration. Bringing in a new firm that hasn't looked at it before. Runs the risk of, um, they're having a learning curve. So I. I really don't see much difference between the two. The two companies, Environmental Partners and Stantec. So I would go, I could support either one.
I mean, I see this as, as a very important part of the overall comprehensive permit. Um, and that's why I definitely lean towards having. A different firm look at it from the one that looked at it for the town. And, uh. So that's where I stand from. Um, I, Mr. Hill, do you, Dan Hill, do you have something to say?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, uh, Dan Hill, I represent the MACT, and I. If, if it would be okay for me to make up just a brief comment on this, because I know this is going to be coming up in every peer review selection that you make, and. I wanted to echo what, what Attorney Pucci said, that. It, what's really most important in reviewing these proposals is not the lump sum quote, it's the hourly rates of the engineers. Because you can ask them to do as little or as much as you want them to do. So if, if Environmental Partners is saying they're going to come to five meetings and. Spend a hundred hours, you could always go back to them and say, look, we don't, we don't want that much work. We want two meetings or, or one meeting. And, and in that case, it's really apples to apples. Uh, it's, it sounds to me like BSC and Environmental Partners. Are quoting roughly the same hourly rates. Uh, and I, I would really encourage the board to just, you know, make a decision based upon that factor. And then manage the people that you're hiring and, and only, you know, ask them to produce reports. Uh, and to answer questions that you specifically direct them to do. Um, I, in my experience, Environmental Partners is a very good firm. Um, I know that Mr. Angler has dealt with them in, in Brookline. Um, and they're, they're very, very well established, and I, I would recommend that they be, be selected for this, for this project.
Thank you.
Chair, I have no problem with Environmental Partners. But I've done this as long or as much as Dan, and I have never seen a peer review consultant not bill to what they estimated, ever. All right, so it's, if they bill, if they estimate eleven grand, they're not going to bill six. Or say, oh, we only had to go to one hearing. No way. So for Mr. Hill to say that rates are. Yeah, the hourly rates may be the same, but there's no way if they, if they know. They have a contract signed for eleven thousand dollars, do you really think, or sixteen? That they're only going to charge ten? No way. So, listen, I don't care. I'm not going to argue about this. If, if the board wants to, you know, hire somebody for twice the cost. For the, more or less the same level of service. That's your discretion, but, you know, in the spirit of compromise, if that's the direction you're going to go, then, you know, I'll. I'll take that under advisement.
Thank you, Mr. Angler.
Um, I, I had a comment. It's James Mitchell.
Yes.
I'm wondering at this moment, uh, Mr. Angler raised, I think, a very important point. I'm not sure, can we make a decision on one of these three firms, not knowing if any of them can perform by January sixth?
Well, my, what my suggestion was going to be is that we rank them. We go out to the one we rank number one and say, can you get it done by January sixth? If they say no, we go on to number two. If they say no, we go on to number three.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Now, that was where I was coming from, is, is not only, you know, make, making a selection, but. Confirming that in fact, they can get it completed by January sixth.
I would support that, Sarah.
Okay.
Would someone be kind enough to email me the proposals? I do have that right as the applicant, the people writing the checks here to be able to see the proposals.
Yes, we can send them to you.
Sarah, shall we move to a ranking?
Yes. Where are we coming down on this? It sounds to me like Environmental Partners is number one, BSC is number two, and Stantec is number three.
I would agree with that. James Mitchell.
Yeah, I'm with you on that one.
Yeah, that seems to be the consensus. This is Brian.
Catherine Howe, also.
And Jim?
Yes, I, I said I would.
Okay. Okay. So. I make a motion that we. Rank the. Traffic peer reviewers. In the following na- manner, first choice would be Environmental Partners, second choice would be BSC. Third choice would be Stantec, predicated on the fact that the. Peer reviewer must be able to commit to completing the peer review by January sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Sean seconds. I'll take a roll call vote. James.
Approved. Yes.
Sean. Brian.
Yes, approved.
Catherine.
Approved.
Jim?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. And we will. Send copies of the three proposals received to. Mr. Angler, um, tomorrow morning. Okay. Um, the status of the other peer reviews. We've sent out the RFPs on the environmental. And. We requested a response date of January third, twenty twenty-two. With the hope that we can then select an environmental peer reviewer at our. Meeting on January twelfth. That's the purpose being now. So has, has the. The third one gone out for engineering and geotech?
It has not. I was collecting, um, comments today from our Department of Public Works. Ezra and Town Council and Greg, just to make sure that it was, it seemed complete, but. The comments that I've got back, I think I'm ready to send it out tomorrow morning.
Oh, can we ask for a return date of January sixth on that one also?
Oh, well, I thought you had said January seventeenth. Do you want January sixth?
Oh, had I said January seventeen?
Yeah.
Okay, we can go with January sixth.
I can, I think either gives it enough time, so I think it's up to you.
Okay, so return of seventeenth, that's fine. Okay. There's only so much we can do in each meeting.
Yeah, there, I think we have a list of seven or eight, so it will take some, some re- some review for those.
Um. Now, the next thing I wanted to. Discuss is the, um. Status of the. Request for certification of safe harbor from. DHCD at the state. Um, we received a letter today, um, from DHCD. Denying our request for certification. So the board will need to make a decision. Based on the timing of when the state responded. If, if we don't appeal, I believe our hundred and twenty, hundred and eighty days will be up on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, which means we'll have to. Completely review the comprehensive permit by then, which is one of the reasons why I'm trying to push this stuff. A little earlier so that we can get things done. Um. But the board will make, to, need to make a determination of whether or not we wish to appeal. Um, that decision from the state. Um, it's been recommended that we do that in executive session. So the question is, is, do we want to do an ex? An executive se- session. At the end of our regular ZBA meeting on December fifteenth. I know only have five people there that night, or do we want to do an executive session on Tuesday the fourteenth? In per- that would be in person at town hall, I think would be the easiest.
Tuesday, the, uh, fourteenth. Is that what you said?
Yep. Tuesday the fourteenth or Wednesday the fifteenth. At the end of our regular meeting.
The fourteenth works better for me, obviously.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of going with the fourteenth also.
And it's a.
Are we talking about? December fourteenth?
Yes.
Next Tuesday.
In the evening? Yeah, I can't be at that.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm sorry to weigh in on this. You're, you're talking to the board members, but if you wanted counsel there. That day is a problem for me.
The fourteenth?
Fourteenth and the fifteenth are problems, either day or night.
Okay.
I apologize. I, I can't move some of these things that I have on, um.
Okay, then I'll. Offline this and find an appropriate meeting.
I apologize. I, I, I normally would move things around. The, these things that I have on those days, I cannot move.
Okay. Yeah, the ch- the challenge we have is. With only twenty days, we have to make a decision relatively.
Correct.
Quickly, but, um, I'll kind of pull the ball aboard and see.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, on the safe harbor.
Yes, Mr. Angler.
I don't know if the zoning board members have read the letter. If they haven't, they probably will shortly. I mean, the decision and the issues at hand could not be more clear. I mean, I said that the town has no chance to win this. People didn't believe me. You guys, you know, did what you have the right to do, and. You pushed it and DHCD opined. I mean, it's certainly your discretion, but it, it's not a winning hand, and to appeal, everything gets stayed. Forget about the traffic being ready by January sixth. Everything goes, goes on hold. Um, and then, you know, presumably when. DHCD finds in our favor again, then we pick it up, and it's not like you have more time on the back end. It's just delaying. What's going to occur now. So I would humbly and respectfully. Ask you to defer to your counsel and look at the position you're holding and the set of circumstances. When you consider whether or not an appeal is in the best interest of the zoning board and the town at whole relative to, you know, spending money on, on your counsel. Who, you know, whatever, but it, I, you know, it's a more global issue than that, and it's. We'll, you know, respond accordingly, but you, you have every right to do it. I would just ask you to think critically and look at the facts of the case.
Thank you, Mr. Angler. Um, Steve Gang, do you wish to be recognized?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a simple question, although I can't resist observing that. Your adversary will always advise you not to appeal. I'm not sure how valuable that advice actually is, with all due respect, Mr. Angler. Uh, but the question I have is, is it possible to share the reasons that DHCD gave you, if they gave any in the letter?
Um, Mr. Pucci, is it appropriate for me to put it up on the website?
It, it's a public record. Um, and I appreciate you ass- asking me a question, because I, I try to be respectful on Zoom and not speak over you and. Yeah, so a couple of things that I just want to mention about that. Yes, absolutely, that's a public record. You can post it online. You can. Email it around, whatever you choose to do. Uh, so, so, um, the member who just, the ConCon member. I, I saw him on the screen. If he wants to read that, that's a public document. He's free to read it. I'm sure somebody can email it to him. But you can also post it on the website if you choose to do that. I would. Recommend strongly that any discussion. About that. Be, be limited to scheduling right now, and don't, don't talk anymore. You know, the. Applicant. Weighed in and, and I, you know, I, I don't like to be rude, but. We, you shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't have kind of a free-for-all about comments on this. It's something for the board to discuss in executive session. It's not something that. Um, should, you know, should be discussed substantively, uh, in open session, uh, here. So I would just limit it to scheduling. And if you need to do the scheduling by, you know, emailing around after the, uh, hearing, that, that's fine as well.
Thank you. Okay, um. With that. We will move on to. Future meetings. So my plan is. To hold. 40 B, the 40 B meetings on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. Our regular Z B A meeting is on the third Wednesday, so if we hold them on the second and the fourth, which would mean our next meeting would be on January 12, with the intention of discussing the traffic circulation, parking, public safety, peer review, and transportation report. Now, Mr. Angler, I don't believe we've received the updated report yet.
You have not. We've done the counts, but we did not submit the report because, as I indicated, we told our team to stand down until the safe harbor was adjudicated, which it was today. So I told my traffic engineer to finish the report. If the town chooses to appeal and without getting into the specifics, well, we have no choice but to, you know, put a cease on any work and certainly any funding for peer review until the appeal is is completed. And I know the board understands that.
Thank you.
And am I understanding? I thought I had heard you say January 6.
January 12. January 6 is to get the peer review completed, which would then enable us, give us a week to look at it before we meet again.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
So our board members good with meeting on the seventh and fourth, second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. So the next meeting would be January 12. Except for an executive session we'll need to hold prior to that.
Yes.
Yes, James, yes. Catherine? John? Yeah.
Works for me. I have a question, however. Can we go? Can we scroll back a little bit about the so we're going to have a peer review on the data that is incomplete? Is that my heading?
Right, we need the traffic report before the peer reviewer can begin. The updated traffic.
Traffic report. Okay. So we're actually handcuffing this. So to ask someone to make a commitment to a timeframe when they don't know when they're going to get the the actual data is going to be a problem, I would think.
Yes, but it may be that somebody says to us, no way can we make.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Can make the date. We're under severe time constraint.
Understand.
We have to be moving this forward or else it's 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 going to get away from us, because I figured it's going to take two meetings to do traffic and safety at least. That takes us in, puts us through the end of January. Then we have to do the environmental, which I'm thinking will be February. And then the site plan and engineering would be March. And then we need to look at the architectural piece, too. And we need input from the various town boards. So I'm concerned about the timeline.
Brian, I would say this relative to traffic study. Keep in mind, the previous study was done at 150 units. We now doing the counts on 136. And all the other elements of the study remain pretty much unchanged. But the reissued study is not going to be materially different than what was already issued. Yes, it'll be current. Yes, it'll be reflective of the updated counts. But I would not be concerned about the traffic engineer not being able to do a, you know, credible or meaningful analysis based on what was already done. But the town requested updated counts, so we're delivering updated counts.
Okay, that all remains to be seen. So I just, again, I want to be able to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples here. And again, when the study was done, there was no school, there was no summer beach traffic. I have some concerns and just want to make sure that we have an accurate look and review as possible.
No, I understand.
To answer your question, Madam Chairman, about setting up the second and fourth Wednesdays for meetings, which I think where you began. I would support that. It's good to get this on our schedules, our individual schedules, because it looks like we're going to have these meetings for quite some time. And that way, we can hopefully guarantee that we will have a core. So I would support that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sarah, I'm also okay with that.
Okay.
Sarah, as am I.
Catherine?
Okay.
And John?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will move to continue the public hearing on the 40 B application of Jeffrey Angler of S L V School Street LLC, to be known as the Sanctuary at the Intersted by the Sea for a comprehensive permit under Mass General Laws, Chapter 40 B, Sections 20 through 23, constructed 136 unit apartment complex for which the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency issued a project eligibility decision on September 16, 2021, at School Street Assessor's Map Number 43, Lot Number 18, filed with the town clerk on September 27, 2021, to be continued to January 12, 2022, at 7:00 P. M. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jim seconds. Take a roll call vote. Ryan?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John? Do we lose John?
Yes.
And Sarah says yes.
James says yes.
Oh, James, sorry. I always forget somebody. So we will continue to January 12 with the expectation that we will have peer review report by January 6. So the board will need, people will need to look at that prior to a January 12 meeting. And I will also send you out a list of waivers requested that apply to traffic and parking and any concerns raised in the eligibility letter issued by the state that apply to this topic. I also will be seeking some input from the planning board. Hopefully, all by January 6. Okay. I now will move on to administrative matters. Sent out minutes.
Also with counsel, Madam Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pucci.
Thank you very much for having me. Have a good night.
Happy holidays.
Good night. Same to you. I'll probably see you before then, but happy holidays if I don't. Thank you. Good night.
So we distributed minutes for both the meeting of October 26 and the meeting of November 4 on the 40 B application. Did people have a chance to look at those, or do we need to wait and approve those next Wednesday at our regular Z B A?
This is Catherine. I reviewed them.
Yeah, I reviewed them, too.
I reviewed them as well.
I reviewed them, too.
So do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
Yes.
Wait, there's a typo in one of them, I think.
Okay.
On the last page of the October 26, 2021 minutes, the very last page, page 6, Mr. Angler, paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, Mr. Angler expressed some reservations around deposition 50 K. I think it should be depositing.
Yep. Depositing, yep. Okay, I'll make that change.
That's it. That's my only comment there.
I was a history major. We didn't have to know how to spell.
So do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Make a motion.
Okay, a second.
A second.
Ryan seconds. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Approved.
Sean?
Approved.
Catherine?
Approved.
Brian?
Approved.
James?
Approved.
John?
Approved.
And Sarah approves. One more administrative matter. I wanted to remind people that we have site visits this Saturday at 9:30 for our regular Z B A business. The first is at One Spyrock Hill, and the second is at Eight Kings Way. Okay, and for a meeting next Wednesday, I have five members who can attend. Brian and Sean can't. So if you're not going to make it, please let me know, because we'll be in trouble.
I won't, I won't be at the site visit, Sarah. I have a standing conflict with Saturday.
That's fine. That's okay. Yeah. The Eight Kings Way, I don't know if you were at that site visit before. We issued a special permit last year.
That couldn't back down or something.
Oh, yeah.
That's why she's not calling on Saturday.
And the One Spyrock Hill you can drive to.
Yep, no problems.
Drive by and take a look at it. And I will hard copies of all those applications are at Town Hall, and I will ask Gail to send out electronic versions to you tomorrow morning.
Great.
Okay.
So the hard copies are ready to be picked up?
Gail, am I correct?
I'll have them in folders for you tomorrow. They're not, they're not in folders at the moment. Give me until 9:30.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning. Nine.
Town Hall's open, right?
What?
Town Hall is open tomorrow night, right?
Yes.
Okay. So 9:30 tomorrow morning is fine, because I won't be until the afternoon.
All right, good.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Sean moves to adjourn. A second?
Second.
Second.
Everyone's second.
Take a roll call vote. James?
Yes, approved.
Sean? Brian?
Approved.
Catherine?
Yes, approved.
Jim?
Approved.
Sarah? Says yes. John?
Were you sure?
I was reading down my list of attendees.
There's still a lot of confidence there.
Okay, thanks a lot, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
Night.